First, if you join me in prayer. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here together today to discuss the community's business. And we ask for your guidance and your patience. And that we will continue to act respectfully to each other and honorable to each other. And we know that you will guide us in that. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us and forgive us of our sins. In this time, we pray, amen. Okay. I'd like to move now for approval of minutes for the August 27th meeting. May I have a motion to approve? Has everybody seen those and read those? Is there any corrections or additions? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Financial report, Terry, if you would just review.
Yeah, if you don't hear, hand out, go to the second page. Don't go to the one, the first page that says assets on the top, and talk to the second page. You may have difficulty reading it, it's really small. So just pay attention to what I say, because it's going to be relevant to the agreement. The numbers that you see here are August and July and, and the first column is August, and the second column is July and August. So it's August here to date. And two months into the year, you know, if we were perfectly on budget, we'd be at 70% of the revenue and 17% of expenses. If you take a look at the revenue section, which is about the top one quarter of the pages, you can first of all see that we are already at 50% of Boyle County and Danville contribution. Remember the last meeting we talked about?
Yeah.
Fourth quarter 25, fiscal year 25 contributions didn't get recorded until, until July. So we've actually got a quarter of last year's contributions in this year's budget. So it's making our revenue look very high.
Mr. Mannan, if I could ask you, is your microphone on?
It says it's on.
Just maybe the turning it will help, thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
So just drop down to the line that says total commission revenue, which is about, you know, a fourth of the way down the page. You can see that for the first two months, our total commission revenue is $86,989, I believe it is. And that compares to a budget of $194,000. So it says we're already at 45% of total revenue, two months in. And that's because of the additional quarterly contribution from last year that didn't make it into this year's budget. So if you take out that fourth quarter fiscal year 25 contribution, we would actually be at 25% of revenue versus 17%. And that's about where we normally expect to be, because we get three months of revenue contribution from the city and we're only two months into, city and county and we're only two months into the year. So from a revenue standpoint, there's, everything's fine, you know, really nothing to talk about. So next we'll talk about expenses. And again, I'm going to just drop down to the bottom line, because there's a, if you look at the, all the way down to the bottom of the page, total expenditures. For the first two months, our total expenditures have been like $36,743, which is 16% of our total budgeted revenue. Again, if we were right on budget, it'd be 17%. So we're basically right on there. But the caveat is, is we still have not included the expenses that I talked about last time, from Bluegrass Add for the comp plan and for Lyndon's salary when he acted as our director. Hopefully that'll be in this, next month's budget, but that's $53,000. So we've got these two unbudgeted, large unbudgeted revenue and large unbudgeted expenses that are just making the numbers look a little screwy, but everything's fine. And, but we are going to want to do though, is once we get beyond the comp plan in another month or so, we're going to want to do a budget amendment, like we do normally about mid-year, and factor both of these things in, so when we look at these sheets, they'll make sense. But revenue's all right, expenses are all right.
And for the budget, Terry, it's, the spending is the unusual piece, right? We didn't catch the Bluegrass ADD piece?
Well, we had some money in last year's budget, but it didn't get billed till this year. So we've got both out-of-period revenue and out-of-period expenses that we fought.
Which you're going to balance, right.
They don't perfectly balance, but, but we're all right.
We'll be okay.
All right.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, we do need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept those, report.
Show move.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next is move to construction sureties for August. And Ms. Gray, you were going to present that report.
Yes, the only thing we have for this month to talk about is the High Cliff properties. Is there anybody to discuss that here? So I think the only thing we need to do is discuss approving that contingent on, upon.
Because the, it's expiring, is the situation?
We're needing to extend it.
And so what we could have, since we don't have that surety in hand, is we could have a contingent motion to approve extension, contingent on receiving a surety within the next couple of weeks.
Do we have to discuss what type of surety and how much?
The, the subregs provide options and, apparently it's a letter of credit, so. And the amount is dictated by what estimates we've reviewed and had engineers look over as well.
So we're there in the two-year of the letter of credit, and right now they're at 863,516. And I think it was on the agenda to discuss either reduction or closing of that property, but I don't think these developers or that property is at that place yet. So I put it on the agenda contingent on him potentially being here, but, so we'll not, have to just table that for next month.
So table the surety, the approval or the contingency?
Is it going to run out if you table it?
Uh, no, um, it actually.
Okay, because if it's going to run out, if it's going to run out like the next two months and we don't have a quorum or something like that, I think we should at least address it.
Especially coming into the, yeah.
Right, so.
So what's your recommendation?
And if it's not going to run out, there's no need for a contingent motion. We can just address it at the next meeting, if we get more info.
If it gets back on the agenda, yeah, all right.
So that you want to just address it at that meeting, is that?
Is there two months left on it, or just one month left?
No, um, there is, it's coming up at the two-year. So we just needed a commission approval to extend it into a second to third year. But it was either going to be extended or reduced, but.
Well, then I, then I move to extend it.
Okay.
There's a motion on the, to extend the surety through a second.
Yeah, second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
So Hannah, if they want to come back, then they have to reduce it, they have to come back.
Exactly, exactly, and speak to you all, yeah.
And we'll be in touch with that developer before next meeting.
Okay.
Subdivision approvals, so we'll move to that next. Keith Shannon and Mike Graves has applied for a subdivision of .691 and .988 acre property located at 112 North Braxton Drive, Bearable. Ms. Gray will present the application.
So this one is the property that got tabled last month. And has been sent through tech review, I think, twice now. Is there anybody that wants to speak to that here today? Okay, all right. So I think the issue on this plat was the question of if the city of Danville was going to take over that pump station. And according to utilities and engineering, they will take over that pump station. But I think it's also still dependent on us doing some research on if there's an easement, historical easement on that property. So there's still a little bit digging that we have to do on our end.
So we can't do a motion today then?
As far as it, we don't know if the city of Danville will take that property, so I think it should be tabled again.
Okay.
I'll move to table it.
Thank you. For a second. All in favor of tabling the motion? Motion's approved. Okay, next up is Wanda Acey has applied for a subdivision of 183.561 acre parcel of land located at 5245 West US Highway 68 gravel switch. Ms. Gray will present the application.
This one was pretty straightforward and self-explanatory. We didn't have any concerns in tech review, so this one looks good on our end.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve.
Terry?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes, thank you. Finally, Larry Stevens and Dylan Caddell have applied for a subdivision of total of 3.007 acre parcel of land in two tracts known as 364 and 330 Russell Street in Junction City, Kentucky. Ms. Gray will, will present the application.
This one, again, it was pretty self-explanatory and straightforward. In tech review, we only had concerns of access points, and those got discussed during that meeting. And so there were no other concerns.
I move we approve.
Mr. Mannan, any second?
Second.
Thank you, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, now, sorry. And now we'll move into the public hearing section. Danny and Jana Rigney have applied for a zoning map amendment on their 2.443 acre parcel located at 650 High Street for multifamily residential, RM3 to general business, GB. Mr. Rigney will now present the application. Yes, you are.
This is my first time.
That's okay. You're doing great, Mr. Rigney.
Yeah, you start out with more data, that's good.
My name is Danny Rigney. We have purchased the old New Vista building, our comp care building. What our plans are for that, we own a brighter choice. We have bought this building, basically, we've always wanted to do a family thing, so our whole conversation is family. My daughter is the owner of a brighter choice. We deal with special needs individuals. We have bought the company back in October of '22, and the business has been, Lyndon owned it. It was 20, 24 years before we have it. Again, as you said, it's zoned as RM3, and I want to go to a general business, to which, when we bought it, I thought they was thinking it was already a general business from that aspect of it. But we, we have nine houses that we house individuals also. We have about 150 clients, but we house about 35 individuals daily and take care of them 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our mission, to provide the best opportunity for individuals to succeed in the communities that they have decided to call home. A brighter choice ensures the dignity of every person they support while empowering them to establish ties to their communities through both work and socialization. During our programs, we have training rooms and we train the individuals how to cook, how to function in normal life is our goal, is what we do. So that's one side of the business. And the reason I'm here, if you look at some of the pictures in there, that is our group that we deal with. That's who our individuals and clients are from what we do and how we take care of those individuals. After we got this building, something popped up to where we also own Robinson Hughes and Christopher, accounting firm here in Danville. It's been here, it was established in 1938. And again, back to family, my wife owns 49% of the business. So we're trying to bring everybody together. I think you know Jana, if I'm not incorrect. So after Robinson Hughes and Christopher decided to sell the building that they're currently in, and has been there, I think, since 1981, they had to go someplace else. So we looked at Stanford, we looked at Haresburg, we looked at different properties to move to, and New Vista called me about this particular building and said, Danny, this may be what you want. So we looked at it, and at the time, it's perfect for what our brighter choice needs. But now with Jana, I'd like to do it right, so that's the reason I wanted to come and try to get a change to a business. So they are looking with your approval to move down with us in the building. We have 34 offices in it, huge training rooms for our people. So that will entail to about 10 or 12 employees from Robinson Hughes and Christopher. So we will be there again, back to the family of Jana, Emily and I. I get a little emotional, sorry. I lost my son 15 years ago, car accident. So from that aspect of it, they have clients from South Florida to North Michigan, coast to coast, preparing income tax for every state, including Alaska. Two full-time CPAs, three part-time CPAs, four staff, three part-time seasonal individuals. And again, Jana owns 49% of the company, so we're there as a family. I also put in there the picture for proof, our sign that we'll put up at New Vista, or at now Deco, where Jana and I bought the company, or bought the business. My plans are to redo the facility. We've already painted 15,000 square foot inside totally. I'm looking at all new flooring in it. I'm looking to spend about $200,000 in remodeling, redoing in the building, along with outside for the neighbors. They've let it go down a bit, so I'm trimming all the trees, cutting everything and making it look a professional building, is what we're planning to do, and in the process of doing. So with that, I, I had 45-page PowerPoint, and then I said, at 3:00 this morning, I said, thank you. No, I said, maybe I just need to cut it to this, and I think most of you know us anyways, from that aspect of it. So I'm here asking if we can change that to a business zone, and then we can move forward. Keep about 90 jobs, is what it is. When I started looking out, overall, it's about 90 jobs in Boyle County, Danville. So that's what we're looking at.
Mr. Rigney, what type of parking is there available?
Currently, there's 44 parking spots at the facility. And we're redoing, doing that. I brought all the grass and charts.
So if I understand, it's going to be business building and not residential?
No, ma'am, it's not residential. It is business from the standpoint of, again, our brighter choice and people with special needs. We will come in, and the whole half back here is going to be special needs. The front side here is going to be our staff, which is about 12 people total. And then Jana will be, CPA firm will be here, which is about 10 people. So there's 44 parking spots.
They're straight parking all along this side of where they can be. And then they're straight parking all along this end of parking lot. And then you have this place here, and so it's also a straight parking.
At this point, about, Mr. Rigney, how many parking spaces do you have?
Forty-four. Yes, ma'am.
You might speak a little bit to the fact that this has been a history of the property, and having used it as a market business.
Yes, it has been commercial business as long as I've ever known. I've been here all my life. It has been commercial from the old Pioneer Workshop in the 70s all the way up. New Vista had it doing similar to what we do, only comp care dealt with individuals that had issues going on in their life and, you know. We are just dealing with special needs. I understand there was a metal plant there at one time, but I'm strictly, strictly special needs individuals in accounting only. Nothing else will be done there.
Are you consolidating, like, clients in this building from other locations, or is it expanding and adding clients?
I will be adding a few people, but right now, we have our facility in Junction City. There by Don's, I think you're from Junction, it's right there by Don's, that's us. And then Jana's Robinson Hughes and Christopher. We're just going to combine them together into the one large facility and be there.
Good.
Any other questions for Mr. Rigney?
So you won't have any classrooms or?
Yes, ma'am, I will have six classrooms for our day training group, and we split up every day. And I invite all of you, please come down and see us. I would just be honored for you to do that. But yes, we have six classrooms that we break up our special need individuals into groups of eight or 10, and we, we train them, we, we work on math, we work on many, many, many things that we do for our clients.
So it's going to be basically vocational type?
I don't want to say vocational, but there's, there's training that goes on.
Life skills, Rita? Yeah, life skills?
Life skills, absolutely, yes. Yes, ma'am.
How many at a time do you expect the classroom?
Currently, we have, I've got it broken up now into three different classrooms. This building is affording me to go to four, five, and I have about eight per classroom. And again, if you look at my pictures, you see we have several in wheelchairs and walkers and individuals like that. So that's why this is so special to us, to, to be able to help.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, Mr. Rigney, thank you.
Yes.
We'll open up the floor now for any public comments, speak in favor or against the project. State your name and address, please.
I'm Kendall Wise, and I work for Vantage Engineering, and I'm helping Mr. Rigney with the surveying and so forth on this project. But one of the things I wanted to point out that. One, one thing that I wanted to point out about the property, the property, as he mentioned, has been a commercial use for a long, long time. And in the past, the property was zoned NCC. NCC was one of those zones, it no longer exists. It went away whenever we reclassified the zones about five or eight years ago, I think Steve Hunter was here. NCC allowed both commercial activity as well as residential activity. And when the, the decision was made to change the names of the zones, NCC defaulted to RM3, which is the current zone, to allow multifamily use. So I think it was an error in part, because it should have, you know, a little more attention should have been put on, well, is this really a residential use, and why would we default to RM3? So that's part of the reason that Mr. Rigney's having to come and do this today.
Mr. Wise, can you speak to whether there's any screening on site between this facility and any neighborhood uses?
There's an existing six-foot privacy fence. It's shown on the zone change plat that we did, I thought it would be important to note. But that would be on the west side, along the parking lot, between that and single-family residential that joins the property. So that existing privacy fence is there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? State your name and address, please.
Good morning, my name is Kathy Lessig. I live at 362 Swope Drive. My husband and I own two plats that back up to the parking lot that you access off of High Street. So, first of all, I'm a retired educator, so the, the one angle of what you're doing, I heartily endorse. I had a question also related to parking. Somebody had asked earlier, I wasn't able to see the picture, but I know there's that smaller parking structure. And then the other gentleman had mentioned parking on the street. I know the streets in that region are extremely narrow, and we have a lot of school buses that go up and down and small children. So I was, had a concern about on-street parking.
Absolutely no on-street parking, zero. We have, again, 44 spots. We have 44 spots here.
And that long brown fence is us. Where you were saying that there was a privacy fence, that long brown fence is us.
The parking aspect, we have two ways in, here and here. I'm probably going to close this one off.
Gotcha.
Because to keep cars from just cutting through is what we've seen.
Which they do.
So we have 12 parking spots here, 22 here, and then I'm making this parking, line parking spots here. So there will be zero on the street.
Okay, yeah, our property is right up here.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So, and then do you have any questions for the development of that green space? In the community, people call it the Sixth Street Park. So we weren't sure if that was part of your property or part of the city's. We were kind of confused. Even the guys who mow it, they tell us it's the city's. So, but then it looks like inside.
It is, this is the total property, and absolutely nothing will change from that aspect. As of today, I will not, I have no plans to build any structures, to build anything other than redoing the gazebo like we did, basically making it pretty. And again, I'm going to trim all of this stuff out and make it look a showplace. That's what we, that's how we operate and how we've done. But, no, there will be no, other than enhancing maybe a tree or two, maybe, or something, but, but I'm leaving all the green space in here, and nothing will be touched from that standpoint, no matter.
Well, my husband and I heartily endorse that. We have worked really hard to develop our property. We moved into Danville a year ago, and have really worked hard to make a back garden.
Yes, ma'am.
We sit and we see that, that view.
I've seen your garden, and I'm sort of envy it a little bit.
Yeah, so, so I support this, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, are there any other comments? Yes, please state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Lori Kagan-Moore. I own and operate the Great American Dollhouse Museum at three-forty-four Swope Drive, and I have a couple of acres on the other side. I just had a question or two, possibly more out of curiosity, but with the special needs...
Excuse me, would you speak toward the microphone?
I'm sorry. With the special needs group, about how many individuals do you figure that will be there each day? And is it an adult daycare situation? In other words, they're dropped off at some point, and then they spend the day there? Or is it more that they come for classes, or how do you, how will that go?
It is. It is one-hundred percent adult care from that aspect of it. You've got to be eighteen plus to be in our programs. Most of our individuals are in the range of thirty to seventy-eight. They are dropped off, but they're dropped off from our houses with the bus, buses that travel through there now. So they will be dropped off at around eight-thirty in the morning, and then we would depart about four-thirty in the afternoon, and take them back to the residential, to their homes, is what we do. And then we care for others that will come in and out, but majority, it's about thirty people per day that come. We have a full kitchen there, we feed them breakfast, we feed lunch, so we prepare everything, everything they do, is what we do. And again, please, come anytime. We enjoy, we enjoy visitors every day if we can get them to come and see who we are. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think that does speak to some degree to the issue of any parking problem, if they're coming in their own buses, if those thirty individuals, that's not thirty families bringing their cars and blah, 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 blah. I think that that whole area, I'm well aware that it used to be NCC, and that was a change, so it is commercial, we're commercial, and I support this use of it. I think it's a good use for this community, this building, this property. I look forward to someone taking care of the grounds over there, and I hope this passes, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else have anything they want to say?
I'm Sarah Ballcamp, and I live on Shadlin Drive, which feeds right into Swope Drive. I think your project sounds great, and I have no big objections. My only concern is the traffic. I've talked to Josh, our city and city manager about this, and I think Swope Drive is scheduled to get a speed bump, at least one. I walk along there, I come down Shadlin and walk along Swope and walk up in that neighborhood, and your parking sounds fine and take care of that, it's just the traffic aspect. And I think if we could get some speed bumps quickly, I think it's scheduled in the city for next spring, but truly, you take your life in your hands, and I appreciate that sidewalk they put along Swope, too. But the cars come whizzing through there, and we've got to have those speed bumps. And I'm all for the adult daycare and so forth, it's the commercial part. With the extra traffic, those streets are very narrow, and there are children and a lot of sidewalk traffic in there, but I'm not being negative, I just have those concerns and about the traffic situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to make any comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Rigley?
Just to address that from the standpoint, we're going to have about twelve, twenty-four at the most, cars that are going to be associated with us. When New Vista was there, or Comp Care, they had every room full, every building full, and they had around fifty cars per day. So we're going to be considerably less than what that is. And I'll agree with the ma'am, the cars just, they fly down through both sides, actually, from that aspect of it. That's why I'm thinking about closing off the back entrance, because no longer that we've been there, remodeling and stuff, people will cut through, and they'll fly down there on two wheels, I mean, so, so I support what you say also, ma'am, so.
Any other comments?
I have one. Is this a lockdown facility, or they lock in?
No, ma'am, we do not lock in, we're not allowed to do that per the state, but I do have staff that watches everyone every moment. That's part of what we have to do per our state regulations. So, no, it's not a lockdown, but we know every individual for the community there. I'm putting up twelve cameras outside so that we can see, monitor anything that goes on, which we have to do. So we'll have cameras in the back, on the side, and in the front, that we monitor every movement from our location for individuals that we have.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll, we'll close the public hearing and ask commissioners if we can get a motion to approve or deny this application.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan conditions submitted by the applicant. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the following items, and they have demonstrated that the current zoning designation is inappropriate. So therefore, I propose the zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Your second?
Second.
Second, babe. Henry, that motion okay?
I wanted to piggyback on and say, with regard to comp land conformity, it is shown on our current future land use map as being commercial, so that's an area of conformity. With regard to our guidance for commercial development, that guidance speaks to the transition between commercial uses and neighboring residential uses, and there will be no change in that transition based on this use. The guidance also speaks to screening and buffering, and we heard testimony that there's an existing fence that offers screening.
I'll incorporate that into my motion.
Thank you.
That's your second.
And I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rigley.
Thank you.
Thank you. You come and see us, please.
Will do.
Highly ask, come and see us.
Thanks.
And that goes to the neighborhood, too, please. Our doors are open. The, we'll move into another part of the business now to talk about the 2025 comprehensive plan for Danville, Boil County. It was introduced at last commissioner's meeting on September's, and it's been, it's been open online for public review since the seventeenth. Mrs. Gray will now, will tell us a little bit about the plan. Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for joining us this morning. I first want to walk through the steps we've taken to develop the 2025 comprehensive plan, and then share the next steps in the process. This plan was a result of over two years' worth of work, collaboration, and community input. We began this process back in 2023 with a series of vision meetings held in Danville, Junction City, Perriville, Parksville, and Forkland. These meetings gave us a chance to hear from, directly from residents about what matters most, housing, transportation, economic development, and historic preservation. From those meetings, we formed the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which included four Planning and Zoning Commissioners, Sam Collier, Dan Nollet, Tom Ruby, and Terry Mannan, along with our former Planning Director, Michaela Jerry, and our Danville City Engineer, Josh Morgan. And this committee worked closely with the city and the county to shape the goals and objectives that formed the foundation for this plan. Then in the fall of 2024, we introduced the draft of the Future Land Use Map, or the Flume, through a round of another, another round of public meetings. Throughout 2023 and 2025, public input has been the most important part of this process. I stepped into this role in June of 2025, and I'm very excited to be able to carry it through the finish line. So what are the next steps? Hopefully this morning, the Planning and Zoning Commission may consider moving toward adoption of this plan, but if adopted, the comprehensive plan and the Flume will serve as the foundation for the Planning and Zoning Commission. This plan will be a guide for how the community will grow and develop over time, and it will be a living document, and one that continues to grow and adapt alongside the community. But today, I do want to express my gratitude for the work that has been done. I want to thank the Danville and Boil County community for your time, your input, and your patience throughout this process. Throughout all of the public meetings, you've shared your ideas, your concerns, and your hopes for the future of Danville and Boil County, and the commission is grateful for your participation, participation. This plan reflects all of your voices, and it truly belongs to the community. I also want to recognize the Comprehensive Plan Committee for their years of commitment and hard work, and I want to thank Michaela Jerry for helping get this process started and set the foundation for the plan that we have today. And finally, I want to express my gratitude to the Danville City Commission and the Boil County Fiscal Court, thank you. And I want to, your confidence in us has, and support throughout this process has been essential to getting us here today. So I'm excited to share this plan with you guys today, and I'll throw it back to you all.
Any questions from, through the, from the commission?
No, I'll make a comment.
Okay, make one.
Having done strategic planning at the national government level for my whole career, this was, to me, this was a fantastic process to see at the local level, and it meant so much more because of the direct input from the community. When you're doing planning, strategic planning at the national level, you, nobody ever talks to citizens, and the citizens generally, I mean, everybody pretends that they matter, but they don't. But here, they really do. And in, in all of those meetings, everybody was really cordial. I mean, everybody, we went to these things, everybody was cordial, everybody had real, genuine input, and everybody wanted the best for the community. I mean, you could see that here. And what was really impressive is that my fellow members on the, on the comp land committee, from, from the county and the city and from, you know, from, it was really fascinating to see how all of the community inputs were taken, I mean, how seriously that, that was really, really taken. Nobody scoffed at anything, I don't think, because anything was scoffable to bring up. So, I know, I mean, I just want to thank everybody. I thought this was going to be teeth pulling in, in fact, it was really a joy. That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tom, I appreciate it. Any, any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, I'd like to open the floor to public comments regarding the plan. If you'd like to share your thoughts, I think, as Tom mentioned, we gave ever, most people a chance to share their thoughts in public meetings previously, as went around and stuff, so hopefully those, those thoughts have been shared, and we either, maybe we've taken action on it, maybe we haven't, I don't know what your thoughts may have been. But it gives you another chance here to come up and tell us what you think, and if you would, if not, that's great, too. So, anybody want to come forward and offer a thought, a question, a suggestion, whatever? Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Excuse me, good morning, my name is Melanie Thornberry, and I live at six-twenty-three Graybrook Street here in Danville. I am also an attorney who practices a great deal in front of you all, in front of the Board of Adjustments. I've worked about twenty years on land use law and zoning regulations, having had the benefit of learning and working with my father, Merle Clark, who was an attorney here for forty-plus years, and also did more planning and zoning matters than he probably wants to remember having done. First and foremost, I want to thank you all, as well as the others that have been involved in undertaking this great task of updating and bringing into existence a current comprehensive plan and a Flume. I know in my professional experience just how crucial a good comprehensive plan and a Flume that works in tandem with it and that represents the community is. And I think, having attended at least one, maybe two, of the public meetings that you all held, I would echo what Mr. Ruby said, which was that it was very impressive to see the open dialogue and the respectful exchange of ideas amongst you all and the public. I greatly appreciate that. I was looking at the proposed plan and Flume, both for personal reasons as well as professional reasons, and in doing so, I noticed what I think is a completely unintentional flip-flop, is the best way to describe it, of two zones on the Flume. Those two zones would be the Village Neighborhood and the Garden Neighborhood. And I did last week send a letter trying to articulate what I saw as the problems that could arise in the future. Under that, I'm not sure if you all received my letter. I do know, I think Ms. Gray said that she does have copies of it here for you all, should you want it. In a nutshell, and I'm not very good at nutshells, but in a nutshell, I will say that the flip-flopping has resulted in the areas on our Flume that are currently shown as low-density residential, which correlates with our R1A and R1B zones, and are yellow in color on the current Flume. And areas that are shown as moderate-density residential being R1C and RMD, excuse me, and shown as the orange color, have essentially been flopped so that Garden Neighborhood, which is the best description for the use of moderate-density and high-density areas, has been put on those areas that are R1A and R1B. And this results in a very, very problematic change for future land use purposes, as that it would give a green light to uses that are not at all in compliance with the existing R1A and R1B zones. And conversely, those areas that have been shown as being more appropriate for the higher-density residential and the multifamily residential insofar as duplexes specifically, are now shown as only being appropriate for single-family residential. So again, I say that I think this was unintentional.
And, and really, we want to thank you for catching that. That was, that was totally an unintentional error.
I figured it was, and I will say...
That's actually the whole purpose of this, the last, you know, this public comment...
The last little public review.
Is to catch that kind of legal thing that we didn't intend.
Right.
And it was, it was literally a page swap, unintentional in the formatting.
Okay. Wonderful.
So, so the, the yellow Garden Neighborhood, which is intended to capture the existing R1As, R2As, that's been swapped back to Garden Neighborhood?
Garden Neighborhood will be the low-density that already exists.
Yep.
Village Neighborhood will be the little bit, slightly higher-density that is, that is, that is proximate to the Village Neighborhood. is, that is proximate to the village center.
Okay.
In a, in a, in a, in a future potential development that nobody's going to force anybody to do.
Right. But I will also say, the reason that this struck me as very important is because it's not necessarily limited to only future development, in the sense that there are still vacant lots in some neighborhoods, and there certainly could be vacant lots if there were, say, a fire, for example.
Sure, sure.
And what I think you all want to avoid, and certainly what I want to avoid, is someone coming in and buying a couple vacant lots and deciding, well, I'm going to ask to put a duplex into this otherwise single-family neighborhood, and then point to the flume and the comprehensive plan as being something that endorses that or gives that permission.
Yep.
So also, subsequent to the letter that I sent last week, I did, was it yesterday or day before yesterday? I sent this up, an updated one that just simply gave my suggestion of how this could be corrected, and attached to it to Exhibits A and B, and I reference what pages can be substituted in the proposed.
Which, and, and thank you.
Okay.
We've got it, and we've got a corrected copy in front of us.
Oh, fantastic. Okay.
It's already corrected.
We've made sure that's changed.
Okay.
Because I was looking for it, I didn't see the problem.
And really, and really do appreciate.
Right, because the problem has been corrected in your copy.
Well, as my children would probably tell you, I pay attention to minute details to a fault. My husband may say that, too.
That's good.
But every once in a while, it does come in handy. So I thank you all again for your efforts on this, and appreciate you all taking the time to look at, at what I had sent. So hopefully, it will decrease the number of times you all see me here in the future.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, the corrected document is?
Is the one that's in front of you.
Okay.
It's the one that's in front of us, yes. And I can show you.
The corrected document is in front of us.
Is there, are there any other comments?
I'm Dan Wells, live in Streamland, and I want to emphasize some of the comments in the flume, particularly those committed to runners, walkers, and bikers. It's a part of the flume, and also the green space. I'm one of the runner, walkers, and bikers around here. I'm out on Bluegrass Pike frequently. I'm also out on 2168 Rec Trail. Thank you all very much for providing those for us. So please, continue your commitment to runners, walkers, bikers, and green space.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything? Yes, sir. Please go forward.
I'm John Hughes. I live at 1046 Bluegrass. My question on the comprehensive plan is, is there a change for the property that's been known as the Frankel Farm that borders Bluegrass and 150 and the seed cleaners?
I don't think there's been a change.
A change since when?
From last, the last flume?
Well, let me put it in perspective. If you look at the la, the flume that's in effect now, not the one we're going to vote on, the one that's been in effect for nine years, the 2017, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's called the Frankel Farm, but we had 245 acres along that corridor that the flume had designated for potential future residential, multifamily, and commercial combination in there. And that acreage also fronted Bluegrass Pike by 5,000 feet. The one we're proposing today, that we adopt today, that acreage has been reduced from 245 to 41 acres, so it's an 83% reduction of the space that the old flume, the current flume, had set aside for residential, commercial, multifamily. And also, the space along Bluegrass Parkway has been reduced from 5,000 feet to 1,000 feet. So that's an 80% reduction. So I guess you could say that the, the plan that we're looking at here has about an 80% reduction in, oh, the flume designation for that property, reducing, leaving 80% of it agricultural, and then potential, in the future, a zone change for about 20% of it, what used to be, to residential, multifamily, and commercial.
So I'm, I'm object to the multifamily.
Well, the current flume also has multifamily.
Okay.
Okay.
So what we're doing is taking 80% of that, what was, what was flumed, not zoned, flumed, and moving it back to agriculture.
Moving it back to agriculture, so there will only be the?
20% of it will remain flumed for residential.
It's the front corner that borders 150.
Okay. But that still doesn't change the zoning yet.
No. That still is a whole different, much more complicated process.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Sally Bright, 3456 Lexington Road, Danville. And I'm with Smart Growth Boyle, and we are often a gadfly on the rump of planning and zoning. We keep a close eye on things, and we tend to, yeah, we tend to sometimes be critical. But I just want to applaud you guys on the whole process, as Tom said and other people said. It, it was done so well. It allowed for so much public input, and we really felt we were heard. And I just want to compliment especially Dan and Terry and Sam and, who else was it that worked on it? Yes, Tom, Tom. Yes, for all that they did. And just thank you guys so much. It was really a wonderful document, I think, much better than it's ever been before.
Yes, I agree.
So thank you.
Anybody else? Thornberry.
I'm Thornberry.
Sorry.
I really don't like public speaking. I just took a quick look at, sorry, Melanie Thornberry, again. Just took a quick look at the printed copy that was over here, specifically at Garden Neighborhood. And if you will look at what is shown on Garden Neighborhood designation on page 34 of the proposed plan, and then if you will look at that which is attached to my letter that I think you all have as Exhibit A, which is also Village Neighborhood, I very strongly do think that what is currently zoned as R1A and R1B is what should be Garden Neighborhood, and that the suggested uses should be limited to only single-family residential. What is currently in the comp plan shows duplex residential as a suggested use, and given that you are covering R1A and R1B current zones, I do not think that duplexes fall into those low-density, single-family residential areas. I also do not think that R1C, which is a, one of three groups of the residential, single-family residential, but when you look at our current zone, which is what the comp plan has to be built off of, in Section 4, the permitted residential use, excuse me, the permitted residential unit types that are permissible in the R1C zone are significantly broader and different than those which are permitted in the R1A and R1B. So it is my suggestion and my hope that you all can amend what is here as Garden Neighborhood on page 34, and I think it appears subsequently, maybe on 95, to be the Exhibit A proposal that I submitted to you. The main difference there being that it takes out the duplex use as a suggested use. R1C and RM2 seem to be more like one another and compatible with one another, and to fall under that Village Neighborhood, whereas R1A and R1B are certainly compatible with one another, not just in uses, but also in the type of unit or dwelling building that is permissible in that zone. So the only thing I wanted to follow up to was, since I had looked at it, wanted to point that out.
Do we want to address that?
After we hear, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. After the public comments.
Yes.
My name is Lucy Moore. I live at 108 Cavalcade Drive. And I don't know if you, as commissioners, know, but there is a lot more traffic on 150 now. Semi-trucks are coming 150 to get to I-75 so they can miss, miss a scale station. And a lot of traffic from around the state is coming this way to also get to the eastern part of Kentucky. During school sessions in the mornings, the traffic is backed up from the light by McDonald's all the way to Bluegrass Pike. Cars have gotten to where they turn on to the Pike to go down Ben Ali to get to the light at the, uh, Danville, where McDonald's is. So I think if we add a housing area and commercial property, that will make this traffic even worse. And I think that's something that needs to be considered.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The traffic problem, that if a subdivision is put on that property, it's going to make the situation worse for traffic.
She's talking about the?
Bluegrass Estates and Parable Road.
What we were just saying, that remaining 20%, it's not.
Right, right.
That's flumed, right? The proposed flume takes.
You're talking about Bluegrass Pike still?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were referring somewhere else.
No, sir.
If someone were to go through a zone change to try to make this 40 acres or, I guess it's the 41 acres subdivision, that would have to include a traffic study, and that would have to include the state approving that sub, that zone change. And, and it would include the review of the traffic. I'm, it sounds like there's a traffic problem there now that the state needs to address that we don't have really any control over.
Yes.
But if it's, but if that zone change did go, if somebody did apply for a zone change for those 40 acres, there would have to be a traffic study to see if that would more adversely impact that, and which could affect then.
And there would be a public hearing as well.
And a public hearing for the zone change and all that.
Also, I want to thank you for keeping the 80% as farmland. I grew up on a farm. I love farmland, and that is prime farmland. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Morgan. I live at 915 West Count Fleet Circle, which is adjacent to the Pike, Bluegrass Pike. On September 3rd, I prepared comments. I don't know, I took them to Ms. Gray, and she said she would get them, distribute them to the commission.
Yes.
I hope everyone had it. I have extra copies if anybody, anybody on the commission needs a copy. I've tried to make it clear in there what my position is. Ms. Thornberry has raised some issues today about designations. I'm not sure if those affect my comments or not. I want to thank you for the past two years. We have participated and appreciate the opportunity to participate as members of the public. That is much, it is, and I told Mr. Ruby earlier and Mr. Nollet yesterday that I cannot remember, I've been working planning and zoning as an attorney in this community since 1981, and I cannot remember a process as, that allowed as much public input and welcomed public input as the past two years, so thank you. I still, currently, the west side of Bluegrass Pike is zoned agricultural. In my comments, I've made it abundantly clear that your goals and objective, which are to be lauded for their straightforward, to-the-point clarity, make, I've cited multiple examples that show that prime farmland should be preserved under your goals and objectives. And I, and the land west of Bluegrass Pike is designated by the USDA as prime farmland. In addition, I've gone through my comments and extensively gone through your goals and objectives in all 108 pages of the comp plan with a fine-tooth comb, and seen the importance of your recognition for trails, health in our community for walkers, runners, cyclists, the safety features that can be enhanced by having safe trails for these events to occur, the public benefits of these events. And since 1981, the Pike has been known as the cycling area, the running area, the walking area in our community. 2168 has been a welcome addition in other trails, and I've served as tra, as chair of the Danville Boyle County Trails Alliance since 2012. And we have a master plan that we've put, and, and the Convention Visitors Bureau has helped distribute it, the bike shop distributes it, our city engineer, our county engineer has worked on these things and had input. And the Pike there at the Shell, formerly Shell, now Marathon Station, is the keystone of that master plan. The Pike with its stone fences, its narrow, unlined road, minimal rumbles so that cycling is safe. We've worked with District 7 engineers repeatedly every time the Pike has been repaved to ensure that it remains safe for these activities. No taxpayer dollars has gone into the establishment of this trail, which is our most important trail in our community. If, and I'm sensing the will of this committee, who I, this commission, is going to be to endorse the flume, the 2025 flume as currently written, and the comp plan as currently written. And I recognize why we want to move forward on a two-year project. I don't want to sacrifice expediency, in, in the name of expediency, I don't want to sacrifice the quality of the public inputs. I have not seen, I've alerted, I've shared my comments with my neighbors, with the running and biking community. I've been told that there were numerous comments, probably more than there's ever been on any issue before the Planning and Zoning Commission since I've been here in 1981. Therefore, I hope that you, if you, if it's the will of this commission to proceed with the 42 acres remaining Village Center and Village Neighborhood, as they're currently shown on the flume, if, unless Ms. Thornberry's amendments have changed it, and if so, we should keep it open so we can study those, because I just learned about that today, then, then. then, then if that's the case, then I submit that in your comp plan, you know, Mr. Smith can weigh in, but, or Ms. Gray can weigh in and advise us, but the comprehensive plan process under KRS-100 is written such that you can put on each designated area, including Bluegrass, which is set forth in your comp plan in this document, and in that section you could put that future development along that 42 acres would include a condition precedent for development, that the developer would grant an easement to the city or the county, and that that easement would, and in that easement, that developer would create a 10-foot-wide shared-use path that will preserve the master plan that our Trails Alliance has set forth and protect it from the increased traffic, which is inevitable, along the Pike. If you, if you proceed with the flume, the 2025 flume today, then that should be added to the comp plan so that there's a path along Bluegrass Pike, a shared-use path along Highway 150 Perrival Road, because the Trails Alliance has a Hughes Lane connector up at Hughes Lane that connects, for a quarter of a mile, connects the Hughes Lane to Corporate Drive and then Corporate Drive to Alum Springs. And we're working on a trail that will connect Corporate Hughes Lane Connector to Lebanon Road and then from Lebanon Road into the Woven Wire Mountain Bike Park. So there's a master plan, and that should be honored by this commission in light of your goals and objectives. And if, if this is going to be developed, then there should be a condition precedent on the developer at their expense to create a shared-use path along Bluegrass and along Perrival Road. In addition, when Mr. Frankel Senior was alive, we talked about, he and I met several times talking about putting his land under conservation easement. And he wanted to do that, but he thought that his heirs would need the freedom of being easement-free. So we talked extensively about all of the oak trees that he had planted, and he, I advised him, I don't know if he ever did it, to put a, an easement on his deed that would protect those oak trees, those mature, now mature oak trees, if there's ever development. And I submit that a condition precedent to development of that 42 acres should be protection of those oak trees. That would create a barrier that you're, in your comp plan, you talk about protecting landscapes. That would create a barrier that would maintain the character of Bluegrass Pike if there was a shared-use path with the mature oaks still in place. And those two matters could alleviate, could address many of the concerns that have been addressed since September 3rd. So, those are things that I hope you'll consider, and I hope that those will be, if, if you proceed today to enact the 2025 flume as currently published and written and the comp plan as currently published and written, that you will add those two conditions at the very least.
Henry, I guess, I guess maybe your thought on this, but I think of the flume as more general, and the specific things you're talking about are the things that would be considered, probably would be incorporated into any type of a zone change where, where a developer would actually be coming in and say, he wants to do a zone change. That's when I would expect these types of conditions, where the public would have a chance to comment, and these types of conditions would be placed on the zone change as opposed to the flume.
Mr. Mannan is absolutely correct. That would be a way to address it. But I can assure you, I've done, I've represented a number of people before this commission regarding zone changes. And if the flume or the comp plan doesn't already have a condition in it, then it's probably not going to be part of the zone change discussion. You know, it would be brought up, but the commission generally will say, it's our duty to follow the comp plan and the flume at this time, and then you can take up your concerns before the city commission or the fiscal court, depending on the location of the property. And that's where it would, if there's any change, that's where it would have to occur. And having gone to the city commission and the fiscal court on these matters, then they defer to the wisdom of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who basically said, we're going to adopt what's in the comp plan and the flume. So we can't today ignore the reality of the process that means that if you don't incorporate modifications like I'm talking about today, they will never be incorporated.
I disagree with you, Mr. Morgan. What he said, I think, is more true and accurate as we look at zone changes. I, I think what Mr. Mannan is saying is more true than what we.
Steve, should I?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I think what Mr. Mannan is saying is, is more apt to what we would be doing with a zone change, would be looking for, for, for things that would, what you're talking about. I don't think it's a necessary of the flume.
Right. I understand, I understand that that's where they frequently occur.
Sure.
And I've been party to that process before the Board of Adjustments and the Planning and Zoning Commission. But the reality is, is that if you today make these changes part of the comp plan, not the flume, because the flume is, is going to be what the flume is, but in the narrative of the comp plan, you can make these conditions, and then if somebody applies for a change, zone change from current agricultural to development.
Yes.
Then the attorney, the attorney representing the neighbors and interested members of the public could cite the, the narration in the comp plan that you could insert.
I understand.
And that would make their argument.
It does give you more assurance. I understand that.
That would, that would make it more likely that it would occur. Yes, Mr. Ruby?
You, you brought up two requests, two very specific requests.
I did.
To amend. So, one of them, I understand, would be that in the event that that village was ever developed, that the comp plan would say that if this village is developed, we'd like a.
A shared-use path.
I wrote it down, to have a condition to create a shared-use path. Okay? I think that's reasonable for us to consider. The other one about putting in the comp plan to save the trees. Okay? So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you as an attorney, okay? I know that we have our own, but I want to ask you as an attorney, if we did this in our comp plan, what are we opening ourselves up to for, for every other property in the county?
That's a much softer ask.
Okay.
And, and I understand that. These are willow oaks primarily, and they have a lifespan of about 40, 45 years, 50 years, maybe 60. Mr. Frankel Senior planted them substantial period ago. They're mature now. I, I understand that a reasonableness standard would have to apply to that based upon just the durability of those trees. So, I understand.
Two issues here. One is the reasonableness of the ask, and the second is, what does then that open us up to for every other property with the comp plan?
I understand your reticence. I don't withdraw the request, but I certainly understand your reticence. And, and I, I get that.
But I think.
But the shared-use path, like we've built with specificity on 2168, could be and has been entertained out on Lexington Road as, in exchange for the curbs and gutters and sidewalk requirement, utilizing a shared-use path to meet those requirements. And I know that I've met with the city engineer and the city manager about that on occasion, and there was a willingness to engage in that sort of, of condition. So if we had a shared-use path along Bluegrass Pike and along Perrival Road, that would get us halfway to Hughes Lane, where we're trying to get a shared-use path already so that it's safe for pedestrians and cyclists in our community to reach the Hughes Lane Connector at the, and Corporate Drive, and a new trail we're building behind Megat and Adkevin out to LSC, where the, there's currently a trailhead in place that's all gravel, and three-fourths of that trail have already been built, and once we get the necessary easements, we'll complete that. So this is, this is a very important ask.
I think, you know, it's a reasonable piece when you talk about, and I could see where we could amend in the village description to just include, you know, encouraging shared-use path in any future development.
I could, I could see that. My question then becomes, you've done this since 1981. When, where is this appropriate to, when has this been appropriate to, to put this amendment in a future land use map as, as opposed to what you said you were doing, dealing with this with the city engineer and the county engineer? When is that appropriate to go into planning and zoning versus the actual engineers? You following my question, Henry, or not?
The, the place that would occur is not in the flume, not in the future land use map, but in the narrative 108 pages, and under the section that describes Bluegrass Pike. It was incomplete when it was published. I don't know if that's been completed or not, but it was incomplete in the published version. It stopped mid-sentence, but that Bluegrass Pike section could state, as a condition precedent to development, this commission believes it would be appropriate that there would be a shared-use path similar to the specifications of the shared-use path on 2168 to be constructed along the, along Bluegrass Pike and Perrival Road, and that would do it so that if someone chose to develop it, using the flume, move for a zone change, then that, the person who was trying to protect it.
I don't care.
No change to the flume, just a change to the comp plan. Could, could do with that.
There's nothing precluding that in KRS-100. It would be novel, but given the number of comments that you all have, have received, I think it's very important that this be addressed. We're creating a dangerous, a safety hazard and a dangerous bottleneck, and we could possibly address it this way. Thank you.
Thanks.
And again, my comments, don't, don't take them as a criticism. I have nothing but respect. I've been present when the public and public comments were totally unwelcome at, before this commission. And I applaud you all for creating a thoughtful commission that seeks to adhere to the dictates of KRS-100. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We want to do anything different with that? Okay. So, we'll make those changes?
What, no, let's.
Any more comments?
Any more?
Any more comments?
Yes, come on.
Make sure we're done, Steve, with the public comments, and then we can address.
My name is Denise Cornish. I live at 1018 Bluegrass Pike. The area that you're talking about developing into a village, I live directly across from that, so it'd be a major impact for me, me and my husband. I do see the people that use the Pike for recreation. We've lived there for almost 20 years, but prior to that, I lived at the other end in Mercer County called Dry Branch Road. It, it connects, it never changes, it just changes names. So that name is, that road has been very familiar all my life. I am one of those people that cannot get off of Bluegrass Pike many times because of the traffic on Perrival Road. I am one of those people that takes Ben Ali to get out to Perrival Road, whether I'm going to Walmart, Kroger, even to work every morning, because during school season, the traffic is horrible. But even during the day, there are many times I can't get off of the Pike onto Perrival Road and I have to take that Ben Ali route. With all that being said, though, I was raised on a farm, and I see that prime farmland that Bluegrass Pike has with that Frankel Farm or whatever it's called now. It is prime farmland. And I understand you've reduced the amount from 200-plus acres down to 41, but there's, and I understand the need for housing in Boyle County, but surely there is land in Boyle County that could be used for housing that would not destruct this prime farmland. So I appreciate you letting the public speak, and regardless of your decision today, you know, I just want you to, thank you for allowing us to speak, but I do oppose the changing it to a village, and would like to see it stay agricultural. Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Mr. Morgan, before you come up? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Just, literally, one minute. In, in reviewing the flume and comparing it to the current zoning and the 2018 flume, this commission has wisely sought to address housing shortage, perceived housing shortage needs in our community. There are many areas that are now available to address that need under 2025 flume. If we maintained the 41 acres as, under its current zoning of agricultural, under KRS-100, we do a review every five years of our comp plan and our flume. It may or may not be a deep dive. It won't be a deep dive like this has been. This was long overdue and more thorough. But if there's a need in five years that, that hasn't been met by the currently expanded room for additional housing in the, that, that hasn't, that would, that would be opened up for five years, and we open that and we review it and we see that it hasn't been addressed, you could change this, the flume and the zoning at that time. It would be a, a small matter of a revision to incorporate what you're proposing here. But really, we strongly urge you to maintain the current zoning of agricultural in the 2025 flume. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Anybody else want to say anything? Okay? Not, then, I'm sorry.
One more.
Hi, I'm Carol Burns. I live at 945 East Count Fleet Circle, adjacent to the Bluegrass Pike. We've lived there since 2000, and I just, I'd hate to see that corner developed without some type of protection like Mr. Morgan is suggesting for bikers and walkers. Anytime I've been out there, either when we had a dog or biking, I don't run, but you see more people out there using it in that capacity than people driving. And so I hate to take that gem of a, a green space and alter it away from it, because once it's developed, we can't go back. So if, if it is going to be developed into housing and, you know, a village market or whatever you want to term the development, if you could put in some type of, you know, either table this and revisit it in five years to see if you really need to develop this area, or put in the conservation area there for a space like you did along the connector road. And then, I guess, are there other areas that could be developed prior to this area? Use this as a last resort kind of thing? I know like the space between Stuart. I know like the space between Stewart Powl and Walker's Trail, you know, that seems like land that could be developed, you know, that's already kind of has a commercial feel to it, that there isn't as much traffic issue. You know, just turning, when we make a left from 127 onto 150 going towards Perryville, we'll sit there through three lights. I'm, I'm always nervous because I'm hanging out, you know, past the turn lane, and if we're adding more housing out there, I mean, these are things that would have to be addressed because there's already traffic issues there. But anyway, I know I've, I've sent a letter in, but just thank you for all you've done. I know that's a ton of work, and we do need additional housing. We do need, you know, to keep some green space, you know, it's hard to button, to balance everything, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Thanks, Carol. Yes?
I live out on Gwin Island Circle, but I owned the business next door for 31 years and as a cyclist and a runner and a health fitness supporter. I can tell you for these, all of these years, that place, Bluegrass Pike, has been the highest referred roadway in the whole area for our community members, tourists, visitors to the community, not just right there, but all the way over to Harrodsburg, people on the Transamerica bike route. We'll use that alternatively as a quieter, more beautiful way to experience our area and get over to the Bike 76 Trail in Harrodsburg, which is a transcontinental from coast to coast. And that portion, that 42 acres that we're talking about on that corner, that's the gateway. That's the entry point. So it's not just any 42 acres on Bluegrass Pike. It's the place where people start. It's the place where they get onto that road, and it sets the, the stage for their experience for the whole thing and the safety and comfort that they experience out there. Other people have mentioned the fact that there's a lot of traffic going on there with the seed cleaner and the activities there. We've already got an influx of, of big 18-wheelers coming on there, and it's really, even now, changing the aspect of, of that road. But again, as was mentioned earlier, I have spent all my whole career there encouraging people to go out there, to experience the beauty and the safety of, of experiencing exercise out on that road. And with other opportunities, as Mr. Morgan pointed out and others, if there's an opportunity for a look at this again further down the road and let some other areas be infilled and developed, I, I think that would be a better way to approach it rather than opening this can of worms right there on that corner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if there's no further comments, I guess we'll close the public hearing section. And as the commission, if there's any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Figured it would be.
Several. So first of all, thanks to the public for all of the comments, and particularly the process has, in some ways, taken longer than this engineer would like it have taken, but it, it's been an eye-opener, and I think we've ended up with something that is workable for the community. As, as we talked in the future, in our committee meetings, the, the ability to make this document not a legalese, but to make it readable and something that we can all use and think about and, and how we work together, and also to write into this that the goals and ideals that we've heard of in, in the public comments, that's been an important piece for the commission to take part of here. I, I think a couple of things that reflect back on the public comments, we hear about traffic all the time. We don't own traffic. And, and unfortunately, that's something that we deal with in zoning amendments, in everything that comes before the commission. We certainly would suggest in any zoning amendments where we need traffic studies, where we make suggestions, and I know Josh Morgan does make suggestions to the state where state roads need traffic studies. And Josh maintains a, a record of all of the traffic incidents in, in the county, and there have been an unusual number of fatalities in this year. So there, there is a need for traffic improvement, just we as planning and zoning don't own that. And, and so we, we make input, we try to make considerations for it, but, but at that point, we, it's not our purpose, our function here. Comment about prime agricultural land. One of the maps in, in the comp plan shows the prime farmland. Danville is where it is because this is all prime farmland. We, we built the city around prime farmland. So everywhere we are talk about in development, at some point is going to touch on things that are labeled as prime farmland, even the areas inside the city boundaries today. We, we're going to try to minimize that, and that's our goal, but at the same time, realize that there will be need to trade some farmland for housing, and we know that in our future.
The potential for housing.
Potential.
Because again, just like, just like we don't own the roads, we're not developers. Planning and zoning does not develop anything, and I think that's, I, I think if there's a single issue that I've found that connected most with the public during our public comment and our public hearings at all of our listening sessions, was the idea that the flume does not direct development. Okay? We're not directing anything to be developed in the future land use map. That 240 acres, that 240 acres has been flumed for residential for something like 30 years now, and it's just never been developed. Okay? So it, it has, what we're doing is actually protecting 80% of what was flumed for development and taking it back out of that possibility. And I, and I, I know that that's not enough for some people, but it also doesn't mean that it's going to be developed right now. It may not be developed in the period of this comp plan. I don't want or not want it to be developed. And, and on a personal level, I don't want or not want it to be developed, but as a, as a comprehensive plan, it fits in the village structure, that there be the opportunity for there to be a village there. Somebody's going to have to want to develop that, and they're going to have to go through the, through the process of that.
And come back to us.
And then come back to us.
For our zoning.
But anyway, that, that was my comment on the, the, I think that a lot of people walked away with, okay, you're going to make this change to the flume, but that's not going to force somebody to do anything to it. That's correct.
I think based on, based on what we've heard this morning and with the comments, there's, there's two suggestions, I think, that we would consider for amendment to what's here on the, on the, oh, excuse me. There's, there's two items, I think, that we would consider as amendments to what we published as the.
That we can amend right here, right now.
That we could amend here before we consider passage. And, and that's on, on page 34 in the description of Garden Neighborhood, as Ms. Thornberry brought up. I think we could.
Drop the duplex?
Drop the, the duplex residential description on that page. I think that makes sense and, and is not one of the intentions that we would want to have. And then as the discussion that we just had on the, the Bluegrass Village, so on page 28, in the description of the Bluegrass Village, it talks about overall walkability within the village is good, and some pedestrian and bike traffic currently uses the signal at Millennium Park to go cross Millennium Park, which has, the city has made some improvements right at that crossway now. I, I'm suggesting that we add verbiage in there that would capture the discussion we just had. Future development in the village should require shared use paths to maintain biking and walking connections. And add that before the last, and then continue to the last sentence that says strengthening this connection would be a valuable future opportunity.
Henry, is that too?
Prescriptive, yeah.
Too prescriptive?
No, I, I didn't hear the word shall, which is what I thought might be discussion.
No, we're not saying shall, I said should.
Should require.
And I don't think it is. I think that you will find comprehensive plans that directly target certain areas and, and kind of dictate these substantive requirements, and I, I think it's within your prerogative to do so.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Dan, yeah, I would suggest you propose a motion to, that we adopt a comprehensive plan with your two.
And, and I'd like to do that if we're ready.
Yes.
Why don't you verbalize?
Hold on.
Let Henry work on it.
Henry, do you have comments to what we've just said before we propose a motion?
I don't have comments to what you said. I have comments before you propose a motion, which is that as I was preparing to list the statutory criteria for this motion, I asked our director about sending notice to the regional planning council and to adjacent planning units. KRS imposes substantial additional notice requirements for comprehensive plans. It, it seems that we have not sent notice to the Bluegrass Add or to adjacent units. I want to bring that to your attention. Do I think that we would have objections from those bodies? I, I don't, but that is what the.
Is it a requirement?
It's, it says shall. It says that it's required.
Then we must.
Well, you can still make a motion to amend this plan. Your point is, oh, we have to go, we can't adopt it until we send out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So go ahead, Dan, make your motion to amend this plan.
Adopt a pending, send it out, correct?
Yes, can we do that, Henry?
Yes, yeah.
Can we adopt this pending notice, notification?
I think that we would, the, the notice that we are providing is notice to show up and voice an opinion. That's, that's the notice that we're sending out, and so we could adopt it pending that notice. I think we would be required to put it on our agenda for the next meeting in case someone was to show up in response to that notice.
Okay, that works.
All right, so, so.
Which means that we can do that today, and that if nobody comes up next time, then it, then it is adopted?
It's probably cleaner for us to just say we're going to adopt it at the next meeting, unfortunately. If that's the, if that's the requirement, Henry.
I think, I think it probably is, this is a nuanced technique. We're talking about adopting it pending this, this future notice, because the reality, reality of it is, we'd send out that notice, and then at the meeting, we would call it as a public hearing item just to, to vet whether.
Not, not over to the public, but only to those, the reason I'm getting at this is because how many times are we, are we going to do this before we adopt the thing that we've asked to adopt by our governments?
Right.
I'm not trying to stall this. You guys understand that. We've, we're, you can see how much we've taken in public comment, but now what we're saying is we need to take into account the other governments around us, like somehow, like if Mercer comes and says to us, hey, we don't like this, we have to take that into account.
Right.
Well, we have to hear them out.
We just have to take it into account, right?
Right.
Yeah, and, and we really can't see Bluegrass ADD would be, they've been involved in this all the way along. I'm not certain what.
Something that you can do that's done in other jurisdictions is you can move to close the public hearing and table the matter. So that sets the expectation that today, we've had the discussion, public hearing is closed, it'll be heard next time for a vote.
So, public hearing is closed. Do we want to table the matter until the next hearing?
I, I think that, that should be the motion to close public hearing and table the matter.
And that, that's separate and apart from the amendments or not?
It probably makes sense to, to have a motion reflecting the fact that you've adopted these amendments, so do that first, do the motion to amend, and then have a motion to close the public hearing table.
All right, so.
So have a motion.
So I, I would propose a motion to amend the comp plan as written in front of us with the change to page 34 to remove the duplex residential description from the Garden Neighborhood, and the change to page 28 to include in the description of the Bluegrass Village, the sentence, "Future development in the village should require shared use paths to maintain biking and walking connections."
Okay. Now, second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Black side. Motion passes. Okay, now we need a motion to.
Table.
Close the hearing and table the motion.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to include in that also to notify the, as required, notify the surrounding authorities that are, the state regulation requires.
Yes, sir.
So, so I'd move, I would move to table the matter till our next meeting, at which, where we would propose to approve pending our notification to the other authorities.
Is there a second to that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. I guess we're done with that, right?
We hope so.
Today, anyway, right?
Till next month.
All right. Okay. We're moving to new business. Appreciate y'all coming. Welcome to stay. Anything from the advisory committee? Anything from the budget committee?
No.
Anything from personnel committee?
Yes, but I don't think that's ready yet. The, the advisory committee has met, but I don't think any of the proposals from the advisory committee.
Nothing. We did have a discussion with the BOA, and they didn't have any suggestions for ordinances as far as, because I know during the advisory committee, we had discussed the sign ordinance, but they didn't have any further suggestions, so.
Okay.
We did ask.
All right.
Henry, when are we going to be prepared to discuss that other issue that we talked about at advisory?
I think we expect to set it for the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
For, for the next commission meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's nothing from the advisory committee?
Nothing this one.
That's great, I won't be here. Well, it's going to be the one that everybody's going to look at me at, so, and I'm not going to be here.
All right, there you go, the business we need to take care of.
There is one thing I wanted to bring up. We had discussed in emails, combining the November and December meetings due to holidays and Thanksgiving, Christmas. I wanted to potentially ask if December 10th or 11th would be a good combination meeting for everybody's calendar? Because that will be the meeting we discuss the comp plan, or adopt the comp plan, so that, because it would be combined November.
October.
October.
Oh, there's one month, okay.
You're ahead one month.
Okay, good. Okay, all good then. But yes, I did want to.
But yes, we do need to agree. You're saying December 10 or 17?
Honestly, anything that is good for everybody's schedule, I just wanted to combine November and December to accommodate for schedules for holidays.
So December 10th, you're saying?
Yeah, December 10th works.
No, December 10th is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
To combine November and December?
November.
That's great, because that, that's dead between what we would be.
We need a motion to do that, I assume?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we combine our November and December Planning and Zoning Commission meetings into one meeting on December 10th.
Okay, now, second? All in favor of the motion? Yeah, aye? Aye, all approved, okay. Any other? Aye, all approved. Okay. Any other business we take care of today?
Nope, that was it.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.